Review of the cemetery feasibility study, scope of work draft.
All right, good on COVID for now. Review of the town bylaw codification project and editorial analysis. We're going to pass over that this week and we'll come back to it at the next meeting. For the second half of the editorial review. Discussion regarding textile ban and disposal options.
So I have three vendors that responding to us. I just need to finish correlating all of that data in the manner that you all can compare. So I should have that to the three of you this week. And then hopefully we can have it in a format that allows you to make a decision at the 29th. And then we can get information out for September like we discussed. So I should have that hopefully by Wednesday, Thursday at the latest.
Great, thank you. Review of the cemetery feasibility study, scope of work draft. Believe we discussed this last meeting? The first, kind of the first read?
Yeah, the first read last week. So the high level is we have a, an appropriation already set by the voters to begin this project. We have a few parcels of land that we've identified as potential sites to at least evaluate to see if they will work. And the scope of work that we've drafted is designed to give a general sense of if any of those three parcels could be an appropriate site. And if so, what would need to be done in the very rough probable cost estimate so that we could move on to the next phase. If those three parcels are not sufficient for a future cemetery, the next action item would be for the designer to give us the characteristics that you would need in a parcel. So that we could craft a, basically an RFP to purchase land that we could put out publicly and solicit invitations from landowners to submit their parcels for consideration. So the three parcels that we've identified, I had a locust map in there just to give you a sense of where they are. These are all town properties that we own with no restrictions. We gave a very loose timeline of when we think we could begin the work. And we believe this work needs to be done by an engineer and architecture firm. And professional services related to those fields do not require a competitive procurement process. But because we've never done this work before, or at least hasn't been done in many decades, we feel like it's important to solicit several proposals. From companies that have done this work in the past so that you can compare and contrast those.
I didn't see any changes from last week, our last meeting?
I haven't made any yet.
This is your first look at it?
Correct, I didn't, I didn't see it last week, our last meeting. Yeah, the questions I have will be answered by the work, the scope of work being done. So I'm not, nothing I need to answer, ask and answer tonight. But I'm fine with the scope of work and the anticipated timeline to move forward with it.
Agreed.
Are there any, I mean, the three parcels that we selected were through conversations that we've been having over the last year, looking at the inventory that you all did many years ago with Jackie. Are there any other parcels that you wanted considered or are these three, does these three seem to make sense to you? We've got the two that are behind this property or on the other side of the railroad tracks. And then we have a parcel on the top of Mountain Road that we've held many years.
No other ones come to mind for me that are, that seem to be of size or viability.
No, okay. So would you like to see one final version of this before I put it out and ask people to respond or are you okay with us issuing it?
I'd say you issue it.
I agree. Okay, we'll work on it in the next week or two.
Next item is review of the permitting and licensing software procurement draft.
I have not made any revisions to this yet, though as soon as I started putting it out, more ideas kept circulating for me. So again, this project would be a chapter 30B procurement. And I quickly just recapped the different cost thresholds and the different competitive procurement practices we'd have to use. We wanted to start by drafting out a scope of work and this is to obtain a cloud-based licensing board management platform. That has many of the functions that we currently have in the office with the addition of some new ones. So I'm absolutely inviting feedback. If I have missed something, I did solicit feedback from the different departments that would be involved in this. IT, Town Clerk's Office, Glenn's Office, the Board of Health Office.
Was cemetery separate?
So cemetery, we're going to treat separately.
Anything? You had concerns with or?
No, I was just trying to make sure I, I was reading through the features that it must include, just to make sure that it's not missing anything that I could think of.
I didn't see any and I think you covered all the types of permits and licenses and et cetera. But if you've covered those, I don't think there's any that could come up that it wouldn't be able to do or handle, right?
The last question from a procurement standpoint, if we're seeking, if you're okay with me seeking a three-year contract, which I think makes sense for the software after you invest in the transition, it would make sense to switch it the next year. It likely, it likely puts us in the $50,000-ish range, if not a little bit over that for the three-year contract. So that's an IFB or an RFP. So you don't necessarily have to go with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder if we use an RFP process. And I think you can go either way with software, but I do think that there's a quality component to software that you want to be able to have a demonstration, you want to be able to test the software. So I don't know if you both have a preference if we use an RFP versus an IFB process?
I don't have a preference either way, but your point about having a little more control with an RFP and not beholden to the lowest bidder makes sense.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, so if we were to issue this as an RFP, you're comfortable with that?
I hope you're wrong, the three years, 50, but that's a different conversation. But I know how these things can get.
We're currently paying about, for our current software, I want to say we're just under $10,000 a year. And that's not cloud-based and it's not encrypted, it's on our local systems and everything else. So I do anticipate there's going to be more costs for that and depending on the bells and whistles that come with it, it's likely a little bit more. So I think it's safe to say it's definitely 40 or higher for a three-year contract. I just don't know exactly what to anticipate.
Well, that's fair.
Okay. Do you all want to see it one last time before it goes out or are you okay with the team issuing it?
I think in order to stay on the timeline, I'm fine with it going out. I mean, we're looking September. Yeah, I could issue this next week with all the advertising and solicit responses for the beginning, middle of September, maybe the second week of September. And then we could start looking at software in September and hopefully picking a package for the three of you to consider.
Especially if you're going to do demos and, you know, things like that, you need some time. And I don't have any concerns.
No, okay.
We're going to bring back the, I guess their secondary is. Scott, you had mentioned a little bit about one, not necessarily having a lot of time to review, but would you prefer we just post, pass over and have a second read next meeting? Or would you find moving it to third and if we need to?
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm fine with doing, moving it to a third. I skimmed them over, having just got them a couple of days ago. I didn't have a chance over the weekend to really go through them with a fine-tooth comb, but I'm fine with bringing them back for a third.
Okay.
And making any corrections we need at that time.
Okay, so that was review of the criminal and sex offender record information policy, the drug and alcohol-free workplace policy, the retirement policy, the COBA policy, the HIPAA policy. And the ADA non-discrimination policy. So that's a second read on all of those. I didn't have anything to add from my second read. So we'll carry those for third read next meeting.
Thank you.
And you're, you'll be filing all of these with a file number?
I want to follow up with you this week to just go over the approach because we're building out that series.
Yeah, we can touch base anytime this week.
So for the third read, we'd have a proposal as to whether it does.
Okay, sounds good.
Review of meeting minutes. Believe you sent the August 1st, 2022 under a different cover, correct?
Correct.
Did you have a chance to review those?
I did, I wasn't here, but I, I'm set to vote on them, they look good.
Why don't we carry those since you weren't here? I didn't have any concerns or see anything either, but we'll, we'll carry them the next meeting.
Yeah, I could only review them for grammar and punctuation. I couldn't review them for content, I wasn't here, so.
Well, we'll carry them over and give Bill an opportunity to weigh in if he saw anything. Did I miss them? Was June, June was not in there, correct?
That's what I'm still trying to finish.
Okay. Pass over the June 21st. Review of the watch guard procurement.
You sent that this afternoon, right?
So the memo in your packet and the previous quote were, were based on the budgeting process and the conversations you all had with finance committee and chief Holes back in April when you last updated this. But technically the quote had expired, so we had requested a revised quote and we did receive that this afternoon and sent that over and the prices have not changed. The only thing that appears that has changed was my understanding. It looks like the quote, I originally thought we had a capital outlay plus an annual maintenance due this year. And if I am now looking at the quote that they sent over today on page five. That that upfront costs of hardware accessories and implementation and the subscription fee are included in that $26,283. And then years two, three, four, and five would each have an annual maintenance fee of about $15,492.
I think that was our mistake when we were budgeting it, taking the first year plus the capital as a single capital cost.
Yeah, looking back over what we had. The presentation was slightly different and maybe that's where we misunderstood it in the. The presentation was slightly different, and maybe that's where we misunderstood it in the April presentation.
Yeah.
But looking at it again now, I'm seeing where it says the direct purchase items are approximately 10,800, and then the first invoice is the 15,492.
Plus.
Yep, so that's how they got to that 26,000 number.
Yeah, I don't think it was as clear on the earlier quotes, it looked like a capital outlay plus, and then the subscription.
Yep.
It is odd to me, the 891 on the batteries isn't upfront, when all the, everything else except installation and training is not upfront.
Right.
It's subscription.
I know.
But I'm not worried about it for 800.
Right.
Now it makes sense when you said earlier we had plenty.
Yes.
It wasn't that much to me.
And annual town meeting, you obviously have the appropriation, but you were also given as the board, the authorization to enter a five-year contract, so this is based on five years.
And this means everything for the Sourcewell contract?
Yes, it downlines everything off the Sourcewell, this is compliant with their contract.
Okay. And I've reviewed this multiple times with Chief Holes, so it meets his needs and.
And I had him review it again today, and he verified it still meets his needs.
Okay. And you, and you spoke with him about the backup of the current data.
Correct.
Although I think there was some discussion about migration, we can always revisit, but it's not a requirement.
Correct.
Okay. Any concerns?
No concerns.
So I'd offered some draft language on the vote, but I don't know if that slightly needs to be adjusted with this, this new understanding.
Yeah, I was looking at the way the. Funding. I was just trying to play around with how to, how to word that, if we just change capital costs to something like.
First year cost of 26,000.
And then subsequent, yeah, that's just cleaner.
Yep.
And because years two through five are all flat, 15, 492.
Yeah, they're fixed, right.
Is it up to five years or is it of five years? Term of? Not a term up to, right?
We are, I mean, it's obviously up to the three view, the quote in front of you is for five years, so if you're comfortable with that.
We have, we can fix it for five.
We would change it to.
To five years.
To five years.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's what I meant, sorry.
Sorry, I was, that language is borrowed from the actual vote that gives the three of you that discretion.
Up to, yeah.
Yep.
Right, right, okay.
I'm okay with it if you want to move forward with it.
Yeah, I'd like to, do you want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion, yeah.
Okay.
It's a lengthy one. There'll be a couple of modifications from your suggested vote, so a motion to award the procurement to WatchGuard Video Motorola Solutions of 415 East Exchange Allen, Texas, 75002 for the lease of body and cruiser camera equipment, video processing and storage services for the town for a term of five years with a first-year cost of 26,283 and an annual recurring cost of 15,492. Subject annually to town meeting approval for funding for these services and to authorize Brian Smith, Town Administrator, to execute all necessary agreements.
I will second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We will get that moving tomorrow.
Excellent. With that, it is just after seven, so we'll call the joint meeting with the Finance Committee to order regard, discussion regarding the John Deere loader. Finance Committee, you like to join us, and Superintendent McCrory, if you'd like to come up to the table in case we have questions for you. Did you bring it for show and tell? No. So Glenn brought this to the Capital Planning Committee, concerned about the John Deere loader. Some deterioration on the rollover protection system mounts on the frame of the loader. He did bring it over for show and tell, hence my, my comment when we met with him the first time. And he showed us some of the rust and the areas that are failing. In that, I believe he provided some different options between replacing the rollover, different protection system and where it's damaged, and then some other ways of doing that, as well as an option for a replacement unit. And the Capital Planning Committee reviewed it over a couple of meetings, and the final recommendation was to procure a new one. And we have all those different quotes in our packet here, but with a, I believe the recommendation was a four-year. Lease with a dollar buyout, so it's technically leased, but it's a four-year dollar buyout on a new John Deere loader. As opposed to spending the equivalent on, to a first-year payment on a repair that may or may not last. Lost my short version. And there were other things about the loader that, you know, are showing signs of aging and things of that sort, so. So that comes to us here, you know, there's no funding source today, so it'd be a matter of going to town meeting, looking to fund it potentially from the capital stabilization. Which we have plenty in there to do that. Or waiting. And I believe your. Thoughts, I don't know, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I don't know if their recommendations were to still utilize the old loader down in Farley.
At the salt shed, leave it there, yes.
To load trucks where you're not going to have any very high risk of rollover being on the road or anything like that.
Yep.
And keeping the salt off the new loader.
For as long as we can, yes.
Yep, at least as long as it's functional. Rather than potentially trying to get rid of it, and there's little to no trade value.
Little to no trade value because of the safety problems.
Right. So I guess the questions are when and how? When do we bring it forth and how do we fund it? And do we want to lease it or not, I mean, there's a cost to that, but Capital Planning's recommendation for the carrying cost versus spreading it out was to go four years. Did I forget anything from capital? No, okay. I had a wild idea of the first year, we could do it out of the reserve fund, but it's very early in the year. We could do it and then replenish it in a special way.
I was gonna say, it would eat up, it would eat up the entire reserve, I mean, you're talking, the first payment would be roughly 50.
And I'm not saying that's the right thing to ask the income for.
Yeah, I wouldn't feel comfortable going to reserve.
Replenish it in like in October when we do the school, if we have a secondary ed adjustment to make.
Right. Yeah, it's not exigent to that point where.
Well, how does it impact you and when we do it, I guess that's something for you to.
Right now, I think the earliest that we would probably use it is, is for salt this winter time. The big project on Mountain Road is pretty much wrapped up, we rented an excavator to do that, and we used our backhoe for replace of the loader up there. You know, for, for moving any material up there for that project. So do, do I need it through this fall time? No, come springtime, yes for sure.
What about availability?
Right now, there's still one available. One.
Do you know what it'll be tend to be if that one is sold or it becomes unavailable?
Could be six to eight months. It's kind of like the truck deal, we got very lucky with, with the 550 replacement that we found a leftover. It's very odd that the, that the company actually still has one of these loaders on site, as of last week, they still had it.
I think that's where my reserve fund came from, and all that I'm hearing that back, I think we talked about that before, but I get, I get why, I think the timing, just like, how do we make this happen?
I just want to get the, I just want to have the whole picture painted for me, because I hadn't had any conversations about the loader prior to today. So what other safety concerns other than the roll, or how's the loader functioning other than that?
Right now mechanically fine.
And have, have we had any major upkeep with that annually as far as maintenance, or has it been pretty?
No, it's been pretty, pretty.
Pretty systematic, you know.
For just general maintenance.
General maintenance.
You have a hydraulic hose that blows here and there, but otherwise it's been pretty good.
I think when you walked us through it, we noted a lot of rust and degradation of the body and other places, not just the rollover.
Yeah, and a lot of that comes with it, these are built out of recycled metal. When they're painted, they're painted direct metal, there's no primer to protect it, so the smallest little nick in it starts a rust, starts a flaking instantly.
And the quotes for the, the work to replace it were about 40, but then that doesn't include paint, right?
That's for the scene, there's, there's probably unforeseen, taking that 16-year loader apart, probably run into other issues, broken components, hoses. And right now, the replacement cabs, I believe there was two in the country when we first started talking about this a couple of months ago. And John Deere is not producing anymore.
Ever?
Not that cab, no.
And if we wanted to do a special town meeting, what's that timeline? Shortish.
I need 14 days.
I was gonna say, 14 days.
So three to four weeks.
Yeah.
Realistically, if it's a Monday or Wednesday, maybe, still.
So I'd have to have some general sense that you would want to, could have to build a warrant.
I was gonna say, it's more than that, because we need time to review it.
Yeah, the in-house, the in-house work before that.
Well, we haven't even seen one, so.
Right. I mean, if the two boards wanted to go in that direction, I could, we could make it happen, but we'd need at least three to four weeks.
When will we know secondary ed numbers?
The census is reported on October 1st, so probably later in October is when we'll get the official counts, because everything goes to DESI, and then DESI does whatever they do to verify their data. So middle of October, we should have.
Yeah, it usually doesn't take a couple of weeks, middle of October.
But if we waited until mid-November for a special, and that took six or, it wasn't there, it took six or eight months, I mean, we're almost past summer before you'll have a loader, another summer, if, if we're going this route.
Correct.
So the only, the reason I ask about its functionality is for next spring, I know you'll have projects that are, you're going to need that loader for. And I guess looking at the, if we're not going to repair the roll, you know, the, the safety mechanisms, the roll cage and everything, but we're going to use it in more flat land for, you know, loading salt in much lower risk, what are the jobs that you have down the pipeline that you would need this for in the spring if we were to get a new one? And are there jobs that we could, that are less risky as far as rollover?
The problem is, we're not taking this across the road.
You're not?
No, because even if there's a tire goes out, if there's a freak accident and it rolls, the rollover protection system's not going to do its job. So it's, it's staying, like, right now, it's down at the pit, we use it to load trucks for the Mountain Road project. And when it gets ready to go to Maple Leaf for the winter, it'll be trailered there.
Okay. All right.
If we asked you this, what's a rental for something of this size?
Have a look into it.
Any idea, okay.
I mean, there's, you know, there's options out there, like, for a rental, if you.
Oh, not that they don't exist, it doesn't know what, how they, what that cost is like.
The problem is, right now, there, there's probably not a lot of rental options for that size, because the dealers don't even have them to sell. So if they have one, then they're not letting them out to rent, usually if people had, the dealers had a fleet of them, they would rent out a couple, then sell them as used. Right now, this is the only new one that's left down there, so it won't be a rental, it'll be, it'll be a sold one. So back pre-COVID, when people had inventory, yes, you could rent them, I don't think you can rent one right now.
Like United or West County or anybody like that wouldn't have them?
West County only has mini stuff, and we've never dealt with United, but I can, I can call it a check.
Say, West County's more homeowner.
Well, they have, they have decent-sized machines, but nothing, no loaders like that. And it's used for removing snow in the winter time also. So if we get a big storm, then we would just rely on just a backhoe doing it right now.
Two just want to mention, looking at the 25-year plan, Glenn did have the loader replacement in there for 2021, and we just kept kicking it because he didn't submit. So he is technically right on schedule with the loader replacement.
Were you foreseeing? That timing was pretty spot on. I didn't realize that.
They typically run, what, 15, 20 years?
This one's 16, I think it was like a 20-year, any of the big equipment from when I, when I came into here, they tried to keep them, big equipment 20 years.
Yeah.
And he's actually only about $50,000 over what he put in for the 25-year plan.
Thoughts, questions? I mean, you all had a, you know, time to sit with it and chat about it, I will go with the recommendation of getting the new one, I am not certain on the timing, though, to make that happen.
Yeah, that's a question mark, I mean, so Deb and I and Capital were, were there, you know, had that conversation, just, and Ben, but we didn't talk about timing. That, we, they sent that to us to determine how and where, I mean, obviously there is capital improvement for stabilization to, to get that money from, if that's the source. Obviously, that, that exists and has plenty. I mean, one puts us like mid-September, right, that'd probably be the earliest we could realistically do it.
Well, and so I was gonna say, you know, we rely on the secondary numbers, we're trying to dovetail the two together if we have to come back.
We're gonna have to do a special, I hate to keep doing a couple, you know, two or three specials when we can tie it all into one.
Typically, we wait for those official numbers to get reported to the state, however, we could lean on Gil Montague Regional and ask them, they start compiling those numbers. They're required to turn them into DESI for October 1, but school starts the last week of August, and they allow for fluctuation in and out of students for a month before they get their final numbers, but they should have a pretty good sense by mid-September, a couple of weeks earlier, so.
The only thing to keep in mind, if you were planning to address any potential need for that, like you discussed with the school committee, through free cash, I won't have that certified until November. Because Debbie finishes all of her work in the next month, she submits everything to DOR for October, they usually get me a certification the first week or so of November. And then once they've certified it, it's available for appropriation by the citizens. So anything before then would either have to be a reason appropriate, which would slow down your tax setting.
Yep.
Or it'd have to be a stabilization transfer.
So I'm gonna go re-propose my capital, my reserve fund request. From the standpoint of there's one available and lead times, if we if the board requested that and Finance Committee was willing to consider it. that and finance committee was willing to consider it. I would do that with the thought that we would replenish the reserve fund in a November special or December when we had free cash certified. Because then we could handle any outstanding secondary ed. We'd have free cash and we could replenish the reserve fund. Obviously, that assumes that we have nothing else that happens in between now and then. So that's a gamble. I just, it's, it's a way to get there, but again. Doesn't mean we have to. I'm not saying it's the right reasons, but it's a tough time. Or we just have a couple of specials close together. I mean, it is what it is.
I'm, I'm not in favor of the reserve. I just think it's, there's. It doesn't, you can stretch it and say it meets the need based on availability, but it's really pushing the limit on what you can use a reserve fund transfer for. And I think you could legally get there. I just.
That's fine.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. Well, you know, I don't want to see us lose the opportunity of purchasing the one that is available. I also don't want to sort of skirt the, the limits of what we can do and how we can finance it. I would, I don't want to have to have multiple specials, but if need be, that makes more sense to me than, than a reserve fund transfer. Even if it's a one article special due to time concerns, you know, it's just for the John Deere and because of availability, we want to get it in front of the townspeople so they can discuss it and vote on it in a timely manner.
We can fix the funding for Franklin Tech too, to the right year.
Yeah.
I mean, we do have that outstanding regardless of where that goes.
Yeah, and do some housekeeping, general housekeeping on other items.
I'm with Scott about the reserve fund. I also feel like this is an important thing that I understand that the highway department needs it, and so I don't want to delay that process, but I also feel like, I feel like a little bit of a reserve fund, for me at least, is a little bit of thwarting the voters and not allowing them to have their say. So and I'm not, I would agree. I don't think a reserve fund is the right way to go. I do have a question though, and I don't know if this is something that a municipality were allowed to do. If we know that we're going to be moving forward and putting the article on a warrant, could we place like a refundable deposit? And then if the vote failed, like could we, is there a way to, you know, with a car, you put a deposit down and the car comes in, you don't take it, you get money back? Is this something we can do?
Done that with the town. We've never run into these supply issues.
Yeah.
And that could be a Deb question also.
We could look into what the contract allows.
Yeah, so look into it and I can call, I can call them tomorrow and see if it's something that they would do because of the timeframe, you know, to get to a special and for funding.
Yeah, I mean, or I guess my other question would be, is this a piece of equipment that other communities are, are we one of many who are looking for that? So is there a, a chance that we would lose out if we had to wait a little bit or?
I can find that out tomorrow. Again, it was, last week it was still there.
Okay.
I haven't heard from the salesman. He knows that we're interested in it and in need of it. I would think he would call if it was gone or had somebody else, but I can follow up with him tomorrow.
Okay.
Are we all in agreement of a special town meeting expeditiously to put this forth?
Yeah.
Four-year lease plan?
Yeah, we're talking about $50,000 a year roughly.
Yeah, I think, what did we figure the carry on that was? It was $10,000 or something to spread it over four years?
Yeah, it was about 15.
15?
Okay.
Versus 200 out front, upfront?
Yeah. So you all want me to draft a warrant for consideration at your next meeting?
Yes, please.
Yes. Yes. And that would consist of this and the Franklin Tech fiscal year change? And there's some prior year bills, you said?
I need to double check. I think we got them all, but there may have been one. So I need to double check with Debbie.
And the source capital stabilization or are we thinking somewhere different? We have raise and appropriate ceiling. Will that delay?
I think you're gonna have everything ready by the end of September so that you can set your tax rate. So depending on when you schedule this.
End of September?
Yeah.
I'm thinking we're thinking considering that for the special.
Right. So I'd have to talk to, I'd have to talk to the assessor's office if that changes their timeframes. Because all of that, every time we make a change, it has to be reported back to the, to Department of Revenue. So I, I don't know what that impact would be if you were to change reason appropriate. My understanding from a conversation with the assessing office was that there may be about 50, 50 to $60,000 left to raise and appropriate. So that's another potential engine, but.
Is it, can we do year one through capital? And then two, three and four through RNA? Or are we, do we need to?
Do we have to even fund two, three, four upfront? We don't.
We're doing a lease.
So we can, can fund the following years however we choose, right?
So you could put it on your, you all have a standing set of articles that you fund every year.
Right.
In your raise and appropriate section. And that's usually the agreement that the two boards have. So you could add this line item to that standing set of articles for the next three years.
Right. And then so all we'd be working with for this year is the upfront year one.
Right. Where does that come from?
55 or 54 and change, whatever that is.
Is it the remaining RNA? Is it capital? Is it regular?
I think if it's, if we're talking about not impacting the assessor's office and Department of Revenue, then it makes sense to go through capital. This one time.
If it would impact.
For the one time. If, if, yeah, if going through RNA would impact the assessor's office and the timeline, then going through a one-time through capital stabilization and then going through RNA, working it into the general budget for the remaining three years.
So another thought on this first year for funding, I believe the 550 came in like around 24,000, I think, under budget. And I need a few thousand for the lighting package and a couple of other things. Is it possible that, that should be closed out by the time of this? Is it, is it possible during that special town meeting to reallocate that, say somewhere around 20,000 towards this?
Instead of, we're only looking for what, the additional 35 instead of 55, you know, close out the 20 and use it, repurpose it? Yeah?
Yeah.
Is that how you want me to draft it?
If you think there's, if that's what's available, it makes sense. It was a.
It's, it's somewhere around there. It's somewhere around 24.
Right, but he's airing on the side of caution to, to keep a couple of thousand.
Is that with you keeping some or no?
No, it should be around 20, it should be around 20,000 left.
20, yeah, okay, but yeah, 20.
Yeah, we were very fortunate on that purchase.
Right. Yeah, I mean, if we didn't use it for that capital to roll it into this one. Okay.
I think the other one, the other John Deere tractor, I don't think that was that much under. So I don't think there's going to be much of anything left with that one.
Yeah.
But like I say, this should be at least 20,000 from the truck.
Just want to check some numbers here real quick.
Do you have that, Brian, quickly? Was it, I think we had 125 for the truck, correct?
One second.
I see it says zero, so.
What's that?
The special article sheet we got today has zero.
Oh, yeah, that, that document's not gonna help you.
Yeah.
Because it's last year.
Right.
So I'm assuming the conversation with the capital and, and about this loader, about going with the lease versus outright buy.
Yeah, 125.
The four years, it puts it about 20,000 more than the 202. Put you about 220.
217-ish.
217, two, you know.
So about, yeah.
So you're about 15, 15 more in, in holding costs, carrying costs to do the annual payments. And I'm assuming that was discussed and would rather do that than dwindle down the 202 out of capital? What is our, do you have, do you have that on hand?
I know.
The current balances?
Yeah, just curious.
One second.
Of course you have it. I know you do.
It's in here somewhere. I don't remember a ton about the discussion around the four-year. I, I think.
It was basically so we did not have to come up because it was an unexpected expense to come up with the whole.
With 202 upfront.
And that it kind of broke it out into yearly payments.
Well, we didn't have the cash. We don't have those things yet, right?
Yeah. Well, and so on, on that same note, I was just wondering if we're a couple of things. Maybe you could ask them, with the municipal lease, is there prepayment penalty?
No prepayment penalty.
So if you want to buy it out earlier, you can. And so the reason I asked that is if you're looking at, they gave options for a six, a six-year annual, a six-year lease. Yes, it costs more for holding costs because you're going six years, but it's only 37, 830 a year. And if we're talking 20 coming back, then you're only dipping into the capital for 17 while we reassess for the five years. And we can still make payments every year of 60 if we want and pay it off in three or four, but it just means that this one year, we lock into a six-year with a lower upfront. It was unanticipated. We weren't expecting it and trying to dip into capital stabilization with less while we regroup and figure out how we want to fund it for the full amount, whether we want to break that out and make extra payments, if we want to, if we do want to drag it out for six years, if we drag it out for six years, you're talking an extra like 20-something thousand. So, you know, it's another 10,000 on top of what we're already willing to shell out for financing costs, which I wouldn't recommend, but I'm, the only reason I looked at that as an option is it allows, now that you brought up that 20, we're really only asking to go into capital stabilization for about 17, $18,000. A lot less than the 54, 55 that we originally thought.
I believe we had chosen to do the four years because that was the term of the warranty.
The warranty term.
Was 40 months.
All right.
So we were trying to not have payments going past.
Beyond the warranty. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you for that. I didn't realize it was a four-year warranty.
Yes. I also think we were trying to line it up with what would the repair be, around $50,000. At least in my head, I was thinking that, like, well, our first year expense versus a repair in the same year of 50K, it's a wash. The following three years, fine, but, but that outlay would be no different whether we repaired or released. New.
So your approximate balance is 650,000. I don't have your current gains for the, the past year?
Yeah.
With approximately 650,000.
Okay. So then we stick with drafting it for capital stabilization after we rollover, request to move the 20,000 from the truck? And then in the narrative, talk about that there'll be future annual raise and appropriation to come for the balance.
Yep. I can get that ready for your next meeting.
I want a parade to come by with this thing because it's so expensive.
It's gonna be a very slow parade.
Yes, they don't roll very fast.
We can all walk with it. I'm just pondering your six-year.
No, yeah, I, you know.
Only because the first year.
37, 8?
If we paid 37, 8 and then we determine we want to pay it off next fiscal year.
Right, or.
Which only going to cost us $4,000 to carry it.
Right.
That first year amortization is only going to be about $4,000 in interest.
Right. And that's why I was trying to figure out, you can still, you can sign, if there's no prepayment penalty, you can still sign a six-year lease and with the internal understanding that we will buy it outright before the warranty expires in four years. Whether we make that.
Either accelerated payments or.
Or, or one-time payment, however we choose. We're beholden to the 37, 8 annually for six years, but knowing that we don't want to be paying on something after the warranty, you know, is up, that we want to just own it outright at that point. We can, we can determine what that RNA looks like. Or funding source, I should say, what that looks like. You know, if you're talking paying it off in one year, that's going to be free cash or stabilization.
May only, because I am usually a person who says, go longer, let's pay it, pay off early. My only concern with that is knowing what's coming up and that we've got two bridges. We've got major, major projects coming up. This would be a very easy thing to then say there is a overrun or this project is coming in much more expensive, so we can save a little by continuing this lease and that's going to end up costing us a little bit.
And then it costs us 10, 20, 15, you know, 10, 15, 20,000 more. Yeah, no, I hear you. One of the things I was going to ask is I know you had the 25-year plan in front of you and, and, you know, I know the couple of major projects, but there's also some peripheral smaller projects that are going to take up funding as well.
There is. And one thing we need to go back to departments, like, you know, Glenn had this in for FY '21. We just kept pushing it out because we didn't get that request. Chief Wonka has had a fire truck in here for a couple of years that we are way past when he originally requested it for. So I, I think some of that stuff this year, the capital is going to kind of work on sussing out a little bit better.
Okay.
So I do know we might have a clearer picture of some of these big expenses coming up.
If, if you think that, you know, knowing that we're around the 650, I think you said?
I just want to correct that. There were a few other columns that I hadn't scrolled far enough over. So there was other interest in market gains that were in this earlier report. So it's approximately 750.
Okay, so you're, we're at 750 and as it stands now, you'd be looking to pull out about 30 to do a four-year.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if FinCom and Capital are, are fine with seeing that dollar amount drop from 750 to 720 and still being viable to attack next year's capital improvement projects, I'm fine with keeping it as a four-year. Because I do agree with you. If, if we have the leeway, when push comes to shove, it's very easy to say, let's pay less every year. You know, it softens the blow in years three, four, five, and then you look at in years five and six saying, man, that cost us an extra $25,000 that we didn't have to spend. So I hear you on that one. Tell them we want four years, 0% financing.
So our motion of vote could have been filed?
Well, I guess that's the question. Are you all prepared to do that tonight? Or do you all want to seemingly draft it and then have another joint meeting where the two boards review everything and vote on your recommendations?
What would you generally prefer? I'd like to vote Brian's draft of that and.
The only other question is whether or not there's another, like a bill of a prior year article or we have that, I need to make that clerical correction for the technical school.
Right.
If you want to make recommendations on those articles. I don't have those drafted yet.
I was gonna say, there might be enough unknown to ask you to come back on the 29th anyways, if you don't, if you don't mind coming back to hang out one more time. I was gonna say, there might be enough unknown to ask you to come back on the twenty-ninth anyways, if you don't, if you don't mind coming back to hang out one more time.
I suppose.
Well. Cause there's going to be a quorum on the twenty-second.
Oh, that's right.
We're meeting Monday.
We're meeting next Monday.
About IP mail. And I'm not saying I want a bunch of regular business, because I don't, because we want to focus on that, but just one item to review and.
I don't think that's fair to the IP mail study. I, that's, that's a heavy schedule for next Monday. That's like a two-hour jam pack. I don't, I feel that would be a disservice to them to take their time.
No, I would add it on either before or after, not during. That's what I'm asking. I wouldn't take up the time that was already allocated.
So if we were going to start at, say, six-thirty, we would start this at six and have a half hour and then convene, adjourn, and then do the regular meeting. It would just be, just because everybody was going to be here anyways, take advantage of it.
Doesn't have to be, but that's why I was asking. When is that starting? Seven?
Seven's the official start time for the, the meeting. People will start gathering around six fifteen, six o'clock somewhere in there.
The other option would be nine to nine-thirty or something, because it's two hours, right? It's called for two hours.
We've scheduled it for two hours.
That's fine. Can you come back the week after?
Twenty-ninth.
That's the other question.
I mean, I can get this all drafted this week and sent over to the two boards, so you'll have time to review it.
Sounds good.
So twenty-nine, that's fine. If that works for you all. And then with a tentative meeting, special town meeting date of, assuming we were good with it that night, are we talking about the fourteenth? September fourteenth? Are we, are we doing a Wednesday? Is our venue the school?
Yeah, as long as I had it posted by a constable, the twenty-ninth or the thirtieth, you could meet on the fourteenth. Technically, as long as I had it done by the thirty-first, you could meet on the fourteenth. I'm assuming you'd want it mailed home to all the residents, like normal?
Just out of curiosity, does business days take into account holidays?
It's not business days, it's calendar.
It's calendar days, regardless of, okay.
One of the few.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that Labor Day wasn't going to mess with that and if we'd have to push it back one day or not.
But if you, if you did approve on the twenty-ninth, I, my goal would be to either have it posted that night or the thirtieth, so that we're putting it in the mail on the thirty-first and people are getting their copies so that they have as close to two weeks with it as possible.
Yeah, usually get it the next day.
Does the fourteenth work for everyone? We'll just confirm with the school availability and then.
I mean, typically for specials, we have enough. If school availability is not there, I would say this venue.
Actually, yeah, you know, you're right.
This venue, I mean, typically.
Not necessarily a huge list of.
You could put another fifteen chairs in there and have thirty people show up and I think that's typically.
Still be pretty spaced out here.
For a special town meeting, that's typically enough.
A good turnout.
An amazing turnout.
So draft it with the senior community center as the location? Yeah, okay. Time is typically seven in the past, seven o'clock? Okay.
So joint meeting on the twenty-ninth and alternatively the fourteenth, seven PM here for the special.
Did you want to move our meeting from the twelfth and meet before the fourteenth?
Look at you planning ahead over here.
Well, I just, I know that's one of our normal meeting weeks. And if we're gonna.
I think that makes sense, yeah.
We're just, you know, even if it's an hour, give ourselves an hour, give ourselves a half hour, whatever you feel, based on, based on the agenda, as you're putting it together, just let us, give us enough time to, to know.
Six, doing six-thirty would be tight for me. How about after? It'll be a short.
Sure, we can do it after.
Immediately following?
Yeah.
Or fifteen minutes following?
Yeah, take a break after, whatever that, you know, runs. I mean, it's one, one, two, three articles.
We'll plan around that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, even if we had to go an hour after, I mean, I don't think that'll be a half an hour or hour special at most, so, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So before we adjourn the joint meeting, is it acceptable if FinCom takes one minute and just approves a set of minutes that we have while we have a quorum?
I will capture it for you.
One less set a minute for them?
Yes.
Of?
Thank you all for coming today for this. Appreciate it.
Anything else? Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll have a draft, STM, maybe it has more, maybe it doesn't. Okay.
Thank you.
We'll see you on the twenty-ninth then.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn the joint meeting and resume the select board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think I got a quorum.
You did.
Thank you all. Review of the paving procurement for mountain road and cemetery project. We're going to move that out to September?
Yes, just to explain, Glenn's team, if anybody has driven past mountain road in the cemetery, I would encourage you if you haven't done it, but it looks amazing.
I drove by there yesterday, a couple of times when I was heading out of town and already seen grass come up.
I was gonna say, I saw grass.
In a drought, already seen grass come up, hey? They, they got it just in time before it got some water on it, so it's perfect.
Had two pretty strong storms come through and they haven't lost much material, so the erosion concern that we have.
Yep.
I think the solution they came up with is really going to work.
I think it looks, well, well done.
So the challenge is, we have some berm that needs to be placed along the side of the cemetery on the backside of those catch basins that have been installed, and we need to just repair the entrance of the Gary Street into the cemetery. We had hoped it would be under ten thousand dollars. The quotes that we're getting are over ten thousand dollars, so under the procurement law, it requires us to obtain three written quotes or seek three written quotes. Glenn was working on that and then I realized that I overlooked that there's a requirement to advertise in the central register for two weeks. So I need at least two weeks to do that. We've got vendors that were asking for quotes. So we have no concern about getting that to you. I just need to comply with that advertising requirement. So we need about two weeks.
Okay. So it's either the twenty-ninth or, but it's not, so it's the fourteenth.
Yeah, let's aim for the fourteenth.
Review of the Franklin Regional Council of Governments Shared Legal Fee Memorandum of Understanding.
So this is the follow-up to your conversation at the last meeting about sharing legal services with our neighboring towns in the PECOG. To review the final filings for the FERC relicensing.
Am I missing the fee in here somewhere? Oh, there it is. No, I that was. I'll make a motion, we sign the memorandum of understanding by and between the towns of Gill, Irving, Montague, and Northfield and the Franklin Regional Council of Governments. With an amount, a shared amount of twenty-five, of two thousand five hundred dollars per town. And is there a term on this?
Uh, it's going to be until September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three.
Through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three for legal assistance regarding the FERC relicensing of the Northfield Mountain and Turner's Falls hydroelectric facilities.
Second.
Mouthful.
Yeah.
Any concerns, questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resignations and vacancies from Recreation Commission, Planning Board, and Board of Assessors. We have reading this here. We had a resignation from Sun He May from the Planning Board effective in June. We had a vacant seat on Recreation Commission as of July first. Is it really of May? I'm sorry, I said July, but if the seat was not filled in May, is it open until, it's not open till July?
Right.
Technically.
Right, so it's a May election, but it was not, it was still July first until the opening, right? Uh, and then we've advertised some of those and since have an additional resignation from Recreation Commission from Allison Rollins and Jeff Rollins, and then Jeff Rollins from the Board of Assessors as well.
Right.
So we have three open seats on Recreation Commission.
Correct.
One on the Board of Assessors, one on the Planning Board.
Correct. So in accordance with the MGL, we've advertised the vacancy on the Planning Board and we've advertised the first vacancy on the Recreation Commission. We put that out in the second week of July and letters of interest are due this week. And I'm hoping to get those to you for the twenty-ninth. And then now that we've received the next round of resignations from Recreation Commission and now the Board of Assessors, we'll advertise those availabilities and set a letter of interest deadline in September so that you can consider those letters.
Do we no longer have a quorum on the Recreation Commission?
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah, we need to get at least one person pretty quickly.
Absolutely.
It happens until then if there's business that needs to be addressed.
That's.
Statute for that?
No, that's what we're dealing with right now.
So.
You have a certain roles that you can fulfill.
Yeah, autonomy.
And right now, we're just working with the staff to keep things moving. A lot of decisions were made because it was the summer previously in the year, so we're just finishing out those programs, but they very soon will need to be making decisions on future projects, so it is important that we get at least one member to get back up to a quorum.
And the appointing comes from us because it is a partial term, correct? To, to finish out the.
It will be an appointment of the select board and the remaining, a quorum of the remaining members until the next town election.
Right.
Yep. So basically through June thirty.
And you said that one, the one seat that was vacant on July one has already been advertised?
Yep. So I'm just looking forward to receiving letters of interest this week.
There's no deadline, right? You just put that.
I did give a deadline just because I want to be able to get them and get them out to the board so you can all review them, and if you wanted a joint meeting on August twenty-ninth, you would have them in advance to review them. So we did set it for this week on the seventeenth, that's Wednesday.
Okay.
So I'm hoping to receive them and people can either send them in mail, they can drop them off at town hall, they can submit it by email. There's a form on the website. There's, there's three or four different ways somebody could submit their letter of interest.
Alright.
We can refresh it on the website and social media for all the openings.
Yeah.
And then we'll do the around town next issue.
Correct.
Yep. Okay. We'll thank them all for their service and we will look to fill those open seats.
Yep.
Discussion regarding town branding and signage project. Mariah, would you come join us? So we had some discussion about just kind of getting back on plane where we left off on this project and kind of begin the conversation about next steps from there.
Yeah, the last time we had this conversation, you know, Scott wasn't on the board and it was right during the time where we were transitioning all of our meetings online and there was just, there was a lot going on. And it was also before the barriers at the bridge had been moving forward. We, it was kind of in limbo at that point, and so there was a lot of very passionate feelings about that being on the logo and the centerpiece of the logo, as well as some feedback from residents on just the general design of it. So I think due to a variety of reasons, you know, one of them also being just capacity for, for a project that wasn't urgent, it was put on the back burner. And it seems like now we have time to kind of start on it again. We also have money for signage, which we've been holding off on doing until we have the branding either complete or at least kind of taken into consideration before we move forward with that since they're interrelated. So I posed a few questions in the memo that I sent you all. And then I also included a draft of a scope of work statement that Brian and I had worked on months ago that I forgot that we even had, and I found it. So it's, that scope of work is only for design, and one of the questions that I have for you all is for when we get to the signage, whether we want to do design only or design build. And then the third document that I included is an example of signage from Burlington, Vermont, which had been included in the presentation that UMass gave us several years ago when, when they did a study on Irving Center. So I don't know if, if either of you have kind of general thoughts on where to pick up with the branding, if we want to start over, if we want to pick up where we left off. General thoughts and feelings?
So it's one of those projects that I, I don't have a vision of where I want the, the branding to go. I did look at the signage from Burlington and I like the simplicity of what they've designed, you know, so for signage, using that as sort of a template to build off of works fine. As far as the branding though, I do recall that discussion early on where there was a lot of passionate conversation about how we, we represent the town in a brand and that there's one camp that looks at it just from an aesthetic response of, you know, this looks really nice and others say this is not true to, you know, the actual vantage point of what you're looking at and this, you know, if you're looking from the east and it got very technical about what, you know, what, what it was picturing. I don't have a vested interest either way. So it's hard for me to sit here and say redo everything because I'm not going to be the one doing that heavy lifting to recraft everything. If there's a way we can build off of what we already have to not have to reinvent the wheel, I'm fine with that. But I also don't want to have you put more work into something that was the reception of wasn't stellar and not everybody had, you know, was buying into it and then put more work into that only to have that get shot down. So I'm torn on which way to go. I wish I had the ability to sketch out something and say, let's go and, you know, but you don't want to see my sketches. Stick figure at best.
Maybe that's the direction we go.
Yeah, stick figures, you know.
Might be best.
Life is good, right? One of those little stick figure guys.
Perfect.
Have you had any opportunity to look at potential branding designs that are currently out there? That we could look at as templates?
Yeah, so I, if, if you decide that you'd like to see other. Yeah, so I, if, if you decide that you'd like to see other options, and that's something that you at least want to think about, I'm happy to put together other ideas. I think we did that when we first started with the other process. I personally think that we could go for something a lot more simple than the design we were working on last time. I think that's kind of where we got bogged down was there was a lot of detail we were trying to fit into that. It was a very saturated image. There was, yeah, a lot of discussion on just like what direction we were facing.
Getting the river, the valley, the sunsets, the bridge, the...
There was a lot of colors we were including. So I, I think the other part that came up as we were designing that was that Irving has very few distinct focal points. We have the bridge. We don't have a lot of very distinct like historic structures. You know, we have them, but they're not, if you sketched them out, you wouldn't necessarily say like, that's the Pearlby Care Building.
Right.
And, and so it's harder maybe for us than other communities. You know, I'm thinking Greenfield with Poet's C Tower where it's an icon. I have thought a lot as we have moved through the design process for the sculpture that's going into Riverfront Park. People have been really identifying with the wildlife along the Miller's River. And I think that depending on how the reception of the sculpture goes, something like a heron could be a really simple outline design that goes well with text. Or a fish or some kind of wildlife might make sense, an eagle, the Irving Eagles. Something that's not like a saturated animated image, but is more just kind of an outline could go well. So if you're interested in a few different designs, I'm happy to go through, pull some examples from other communities. And maybe that will spur some ideas of yes, this looks like we could make it into something that exemplifies Irving, or no, we don't like X, Y, and Z about this.
I was going to say, I'm, I hate to say it this way, but I'm somebody who needs to see some examples. It's, I, I won't be able to come up with them, but I can tell you what, you know, after looking at a few of them, doing just that, pulling, pulling them apart and saying, I like this aspect, that aspect. Let's see if we can merge a few, you know, options into one.
Yeah.
Did you look at Burlington yourself? I know UMass presented it. Did you look at their brand guide?
I haven't looked at the full guide. I've only looked at the signage. Have you, did you just pull it up?
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. How'd you guess? They have a brand standard and a signage and wayfinding guidelines.
Yeah.
Looks, and they're clearly done, I would assume by a professional designer because this is what it looks like where I've incorporated when I've seen them before. Where they have how you use logos, what the logo is, all the color standards, the consistencies. Yeah, the fonts, the sizes, all of it, right? I guess every time I think about this, I'm, I'm, I think, I almost feel like we're mixing two things in my head the more that we talk about it. Are we trying to just do signage or are we trying to do a branding? And they're different, right? A brand guide is all of that.
They're different.
Signage is a piece of that.
Yeah.
And part of me thinks if we were trying to just do signage, it's easier. It's a little simpler. That doesn't mean a brands, branding has to be super complicated. I agree with you. I think maybe we're trying to go too far.
Yeah.
But I guess that's what I've been thinking, that's what I think of when I think of what is deliverable. And I don't, I don't know if it's just the way we came at it, but I don't feel like we were working on a brand standard or brand guideline in our first rounds. And I don't know if that's just because that's not how we came at it and instead just tried to build a logo and then...
Yeah, I think we were, things got very focused on the logo because that was where we were pulling fonts and colors from. And so the idea was that we were going to complete the logo. And I, I think we actually had some examples from the designer of like the color palette and the fonts. But until we finished the logo, we felt like we couldn't complete the rest of the package. I agree that signage and branding are not the same thing, but I think the Venn diagram has an overlap because whatever font we use, we're going to want to pull from whatever the branding is. One of the signs that we need to do is the, the kiosk for the Poplar Mountain Conservation Parking Area that's being constructed. And that will have, you know, a logo on it and some kind of colors for the, for different things. I think that we could, if we have a, a font that we like, we could move forward with signage without a full logo. And so that's something that we could do sooner rather than later. Or if you all felt like we could move forward with a simpler logo design, maybe we just do that and then, you know, work on signage. I, I think realistically signage probably won't be installed until the spring, which gives us the winter to lock all this down.
I like the idea of, I mean, only because I think it'll be the easier, take the easier task first and look at the signage and then see where that leads us. We may find after designing signage and coming up with, you know, our, our look for our signage of the various types and fonts and colors, that that may lead us down a path of what we would end, ultimately end up designing our, our brand and our logo off of. That's just...
I don't disagree, only hesitate that I think we have to decide on it though before we do the signage. Like we could mock up to a point on the signage, but then if we're going to have, don't have a logo, then decided, then what goes on the signage, right? You can have a font and a color, but we don't have a logo.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the vendors that we were reviewing on the state contract. So part of the scope of work that we've drafted for you is with the anticipation that we would use the state contract and not do our own procurement. The vendors that we were reviewing have a capacity to do the design work for the signs, potentially even help us build the signs and get us installation, but to help us also put together some part of that branding piece of this. So there, it's not just like signing and construction itself, it is designed through.
I think we would need to be explicit though, that we're asking for two different things in, in a combined thing. Like asking for a logo design and asking just for them to put together a sign with different colored fonts is like, yeah.
Agreed.
But yeah, I think that these, the people on, you know, from first glance, it seems that the designers on the state contract would be capable of also producing a logo if we decided to, you know, pull the fonts from the signs that we like and maybe do a simple design.
Right.
So the, I didn't see them, the branding, but I'm just giving it real quick while we're talking, but the signage and wayfinding does say who did it, and they're actually out of Watertown.
I think that, is it Sunshine?
Sasaki. Sasaki Associates. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm lending more towards, leaning more towards doing the procurement and asking for something more of a brand standard or brand, branding?
Yep.
As a starting point personally, and see what that delivers if it's not going to be an astronomical amount of money to get to a point where we have some, you know, I guess kind of first round draft of what, what would that look like? What are they thinking? And I only brought up that one because we kind of like what they did there. So, you know, you already have an idea of what that designer either looks toward or at least has done. So, and if that lends to what we like, you know, just as a thought process.
So you're saying move forward with the, like, the branding first, but not including the logo? Is that, or what? Sorry, I didn't totally follow.
That's okay. The, the logo is part of branding.
Okay. So you're saying move forward with like the design of the branding package, including the logo. I do know that Sasaki, they're architects and landscape architects, which is probably why they did all of the signage for all of their landscapes. So they're not so much like a, a graphic design firm, even though they obviously have graphic designers who are putting this together, which is an interesting angle that I hadn't thought of in terms of procurement, is landscape architects do this, which is also why the architects proposed this when we did our study.
That's interesting. They're probably looking for the sign side of it too. I guess that's, I'm just, I, I don't know. I'm not saying we have to, but that's where I would rather see us get an overall brand package. And when I think about, you know, marketing teams and design teams, they, you know, the idea is that they have the tools to come in and talk to us and then come back with a, here's what Irving's brand should look like. Like they, they can distill that, like I can't sketch it.
Right.
And I can't tell you how to get that out of the river, the bridge, the heron, the, you know, the water tower in Irving Center, you know?
So what if you approach the procurement, and we can either use the state contract or not, like we did the design selection procurement for Public Works or for other projects, where we divided the work up into tasks? In that we start with task one. If we satisfactorily get through task one, then the select board can move on to task two with the, with the vendor. And maybe we get all the way to construction and installation of said signs. So they're all delineated in there. There's a phasing. But if we don't get through phase one, because there's some other stumbling block or whatever, there's no immediate obligation to go all the way to construction on a product that you're not happy with. If it sounds like that's, if you want a more comprehensive approach to this.
That might open it up to, to more people who will respond because I think if you break it up into only like branding design and then only signage, you won't get landscape architects who are saying, well, yeah, we'll do your branding package. That'll be graphic designers and vice versa. You're not necessarily going to have graphic designers talking about how you, like doing specs for a fabricated sign. Whereas if you have them all part of the same procurement.
Right.
Yeah.
What if we came back to the three of you next meeting with a restructured scope of work that has it broken out into phases like that? With a recommendation on what that procurement could look like and see if that structurally looks like it could get you proposals that align with what your vision is. For how to approach the work, I know that we have to then deal with, can they give you a product that you're going to find reflects Irving? But that's a whole different qualitative issue.
Right.
I'm okay with that because I think at the end of the day, this is the first piece, but the goal is to get all the way to signs.
Right.
And, you know, wayfinding, all of those pieces, right, throughout town. Actually looked up, hooked up Sasaki and they call themselves a design firm that specializes in architecture and landscape and all of that. So, yeah. I don't, I, I don't have the answer. I'm not, this is not my forte. But I, when I see those branding guidelines, brand packages that come out of the people who have those skills done well, that's what I envision could be really good for us to get to that cohesive image for Irving, right? And, and that cohesive signage where we, hopefully everyone would feel good about it. At least we would feel like we came out with a product that was hopefully representative of at least some qualities and, and at least had consistency, right? And cohesive across town. I think that's a big part of it for me.
Yeah, I agree.
I am less about exactly what is on it, as long as it's meaningful to Irving at the end. And more that it's cohesive and it's, you know, pulls the right elements. I think that's what I like about the Burlington signage. Reminds me a bit of the National Forest signage, right? It's a very, it's got very, you know, woods and natural elements to it and all of that. And I think that's, that's more what we are.
Yeah, I was going to say Burlington, you know, the signage that we're looking at is for their parks, recs, waterfront. And so it's very specific to the three departments. But the idea that it's a very, it's a B, you know, it's a very simplistic. You don't have to get crazy with it. We don't have to put a ton in there, you know, just re, rethinking where, you know, how, how adventurous we want to get with a brand. I like the simplicity that they have.
Yeah.
I think North Adams is another one we looked at.
Yeah, and they're a little sleeker.
There's just like kind of an image of like the clock tower and a little road, right? Like it's right here.
It's got like all of the staples.
Yeah, it's, but it's still simple. It's like three colors and it's...
Yeah, I think that was one that we, we wanted more of that kind of landscape depth when we were working on the, the bridge with the valley. I think that the difference was, is there was a lot more colors going on, a lot more textures, which was hard to make as simple as we had hoped. Does, when, when you're looking at that, does Burlington have a logo? I actually didn't look to see.
The actual city?
The actual city of Burlington.
No, I looked as well. I didn't see one. Most of what they, you know, through their different webpages, I didn't see one. Those three departments have one.
Yeah.
Problem is when I tried to look for that, I end up with designers who are in Burlington.
Right.
Well, I'll take a look and see if I can dig something up. I assume they would have it somewhere easily accessible if they do have one. Because if we like their signage package, I imagine we would probably also like whatever their logo was.
Well, it looks like Burlington Schools have one. Burlington Electric has a different one.
Maybe they all have their own.
They may, they may. The schools...
Oh, there's one on here. I don't know if it's, oh, that's Burlington, Iowa. Never mind. South Burlington, Vermont has one that's actually very, I feel like similar to North Adams.
Their school's one looked like that too. Reminded me more of North Adams.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the right answer is, but just that idea. I think I, I don't know, Scott, and I'm sure we'll talk more when Bill's here too, but for me, maybe coming at it from that direction of trying to get an overall brand guide and standard for the overall as a starting point, moving into signage from there, if we can get to that, might be more, maybe more successful. I don't know. I, I, I know, I think we got some good feedback. I know it was very passionate feedback from different people, but I think there was good things in there that I don't know how we incorporate in the work we were trying to do ourselves with, you know, the process we were using. And so I guess it's not, I'm coming at it, not that I want to throw away what we already did and say that's not valuable, but also how do we come at it from a different direction that might be more, maybe more successful then?
We also still have the survey results from the original survey that we did to, to get there. And so if we bring on a new designer, we can also hand them that. And they might have their own tools that they want to use to get like feedback and ideas. But we wouldn't be starting from scratch completely. And we can say we did this and residents didn't like it. And that alone is a lot of feedback for them, so, you know?
And here's why. We have that captured too.
Yeah, we have all the comments. So I think, you know, even if we start over with the logo, I don't think we're starting from scratch, no matter what we do, so.
So there's, you know, just something Burlington, Vermont, it's just a simple...
Oh, there's a city branding.
There's a city branding. And it just, I think it's representative of the four seasons. You know, it's a very simple...
Classic.
Right?
Sleek.
All right. So I guess leaving this off then, Brian and I will put together a scope of work that breaks this into three different parts. And I can put together some examples of other logos from other places, just to kind of get some ideas percolating.
Sound good?
Yeah.
Revisit next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, this is not easy, so thank you. It is not. With that, we talked a bit about next meetings, the 29th.
Yep.
22nd.
22nd.
The school at 7:00. Food and beverage prior.
Correct.
29th back here for the board, 14th, probably the 14th.
Most likely, yeah.
Most likely, following a special for the following meeting.
September 14th, okay.
Assuming we approve and plan that on the 29th.
And I'll check in with the town clerk, town moderator, make sure everybody's available.
Okay. Okay. Anything else I missed? And do a special warrant article, closeout, review next meeting?
Okay.
I know you sent it over, but we'll look at that in thin ways. Okay? Any other topics?
None that I have.
With that, motion to adjourn at 8:17 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good evening.